It's after seven, so I'm gonna call the meeting of the school committee to order. We're all here. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Student reps are with us tonight. Thank you much.
I see one.
And the first thing we'll do is our pledge allegiance. So please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I said a moment ago, we're pleased to have student reps with us this evening.
Yep.
And we are all waiting with bated breath to hear what you have to say. And I mean that's good. So let's start with Plymouth North.
Hi, excuse me, let me, let me interrupt for one second. I'm so sorry. Can Gary, it should, the meeting should be running and everyone should hit join meeting if they're, they have ESB open. And you too, Gary, my assist.
Yeah, it says meetings are already in progress, so I'm joining it.
Okay, so I just got them to start it from behind the scenes.
Okay, we're good to go.
Sorry about the inconvenience. And so, so sorry, Alex.
Okay, all right. Thanks Peg. Okay, Plymouth North.
Hi, so my name is Karen Fan and I'm the student representative at North. And I wanted to say thank you for inviting Alex and I, of course, for a meeting. And we're super excited to be back. We hope that you've all been well and staying safe. So today, while Alex is getting the presentation, she's gonna share a slideshow that her and I collaborated with. Because we were like, oh, it'd be just much longer if we just did two. So we decided to do a presentation for you guys. And for anyone who's watching, we have links, like important updates and things like that to discuss. So, yeah. And they're all super important. Of course, you guys haven't been hearing much from schools and wish that, but yeah. And Alex and I will be going back and forth with the slideshow. If you guys have any questions, feel free to do so.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt. It just says that the host disabled the screen sharing.
Oh, I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
You should be good to go, Alex.
Okay. Okay, so this is week four of remote learning and teachers have been available for separate time slots online for student interaction and for any parent support. The classes are now pass fail. So below you can see the different grading system, which is now either not engaged, not attempted, attempted or completed. That is shown in Aspen.
So this week, we decided to do a combined like Plymouth Virtual Spirit Week to get students engaged. And for student council to keep doing what they're doing and bring school spirit. So today is Make It Monday. Make It Monday is like, just like whatever you're doing and like food or breakfast. And you just share it online on your Instagram, Twitter. And tomorrow's gonna be TikTok Tuesday. Wednesday is Wacky Wednesday. We have Plymouth Pride Thursday, Friends Friday, Snack Saturday, and Show Your Pet Sunday.
Okay.
So AP tests have been moved to online and they will now be between May 11th and 22nd. Each date and time for each specific exam can be found on the student's college board accounts. Digital review sessions are available live and to watch later on YouTube. The exams are now forty-five minutes in length with five minutes to submit. And they will be open book and note, but there are security measures that have been in place to prevent any cheating. And they will also now solely be free response questions. And how it works is two days before the exam, the student will receive an email with the e-ticket with their code for the test. Or if they don't, they'll be able to go into the My AP tab in their college board, in their college board account.
All right, and SAT and ACT testing options. So due to COVID nineteen, of course, the June sixteenth for the SATs is canceled. However, college board has announced a new date on September twenty-sixth. And also will be continuing with the scheduled test dates on August twenty-ninth, August, October third, sorry, November seventh and December fifth. Next month is when registration for those dates will begin. And college board cannot reschedule the March twenty-fifth SAT school date. And they can't provide, obviously, the April twenty-eighth, which is would be tomorrow. But many states have expressed their interest in administering the test in the upcoming fall. So be sure to look out on news for that on the college board website. Also, students can reach out to their AP teachers that are supporting them and giving more information about it as well.
So for junior prom and senior activities, for North, junior prom will now be held September eighteenth of 2020. And graduation and senior activities are still to be determined. For South, the dates for prom are still being discussed, but Indian Pond, as well as the DJ, has been very flexible. And they're looking into dates for the fall of 2020.
So ordering yearbooks, North's yearbook advisor, Miss Gangyard, and South's yearbook advisors, Mr. Scholar and Ms. Peppin, want students and families to know that they can still order their yearbooks. This can be done online and the links are below.
For mental health and interface resources, the counselors and psychologists have been available to help support students who are struggling and don't hesitate to reach out and ask for support or with any questions that you have. They are there to help you during this time and the link below can help you get connected to people to help.
And with spring sports, unfortunately, with the schools closing for the remainder of the year, the spring season has been canceled. But we want to congratulate all the seniors that have committed to college sports. If you're a senior and have not already, buy a sign for your yard to celebrate the class of 2020. You can check out the booster clubs to find more information.
So congratulations to Colby Keating from Plymouth South on becoming the 2020-2021 CMAS delegate. And Karen is your 2020-2021 CMAS secretary. We're incredibly excited to have both of them on the board for next year and lots of amazing things will be sure to come.
And the state science fair projects have been submitted through YouTube by April seventeenth. Judging will be completed by 5:00 PM on May first and award placements will be posted on the MSEF website at 12:00 PM on May fifth. Details will be emailed separately. Congratulations to Alexandra Goffey for attending the Massachusetts State Science Fair with her project ending the plastic epidemic. Yes.
For achievements, the Plymouth South Panthers TV news team won first place for best high school newscast in New England. Congratulations to the entire team. And congratulations to Plymouth North for the 2020 National Student Press Awards. There were three wins and three honorable mentions, including magazine program, serious news, light news, and talent.
All right, so this is keeping busy. This is something we wanted to bring and share with you guys of our perspective on what we've been doing during this situation and how we're coping at home. So of course, CMAS has been a really big thing for me and I'm really proud of just being able to work with the board for next year and bring a lot of new things to CMAS. So I'm really proud and really happy for that. And but other than that, I've done a lot of online shopping. I watch Netflix and yeah.
I've been, I obviously focused on my science fair project a lot, but I've also been watching Netflix and trying to do things that I usually don't have as much time for, like going on bike rides and doing a lot of reading and drawing and just trying to hang out with my family. And I've been making masks and stuff like that around the house. So we just wanna thank you for the opportunity to present our sides. And we wanna thank all the teachers and administration for all the help that they've given us during this tough time. And that's it.
Great. When I introduced you two this evening, Karen and Alex, I said like, we can't wait to hear what you have to say. And you certainly lived up to your reputation. In a prominent and fantastic, just amazing, just amazing. It looks like a lot of people your age are doing a lot of introspection, a lot of insight, a lot of thinking. And in a way, that's excellent because that's how we, that's how we, you know, that's, that's our renaissance, in fact, to be doing that sort of thinking. So I think that's wonderful. So thank you so much for that. Any committee members, any follow-up, any comments, any questions? I don't see any, so we're gonna move along. Program directors, Dr. Mayestis.
Yes, for the last few years, it's probably been five or six years, we, we've heard that there are a lot of swimmers in Plymouth, that there are a lot of kids that would really like to take part in, in, in the swimming program. So we have, we've kind of thought about this for quite some time. I've talked to both athletic directors about it. And tonight, we have a proposal to look at introducing a swimming program to the Plymouth Public Schools. This is very similar to the model that we introduced lacrosse. We introduced other programs over the years, very similarly to this. So there is a need out there. We have talked about this at length. And we had, had planned to put this on the agenda for quite some time. And here we are tonight that we would like to do that. So at this point, through you, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to have Mr. Frye, Athletic Director at Plymouth South, go ahead and start off. We also have Spanky Demash. He's the Athletic Director from Plymouth North. They are both here tonight to be able to answer any questions, but we'll start with Scott. So Scott, if you want, why don't you just do an overview of what we've talked about and, and how this thing would roll out for us?
Sure. Thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Thanks, Dr. Sorensen. Thanks, Dr. Mayestis. And girls, great job. Tough act to follow, no question about it. So like Gary said, it started a few years ago when the interest in swimming at both North and South has been growing and growing and growing. So we reached out to the population at both the high schools and the middle schools to see what kind of interest there was. And we probably have close to, we would think to start a team of about thirty or forty kids right now that would be interested in, as a co-op team. We then brought the proposal to, we actually then met with the people at Pine Hills to see if there was a place for us to practice the cost, what it would, would be to run the program. Then went, met with Dr. Campbell, Dr. Mayestis, and Mr. Costin and discussed the proposal of bringing the swim team to the school committee. And that's kind of where we're at right now. It would be a co-ed program, boys and girls run during the winter time. The great part about that, it doesn't involve any Title IX issues with the both being male and female. Swimming is a type of sport where it doesn't take away kids from other sports, either a swimmer, you're a swimmer. Also, we are right now currently the only team in the Patriot League that doesn't have a swim team. So there are twelve teams in the Patriot League, eleven have swim teams. And the majority of the swim teams in the Cape, most of the high schools have swim teams as well. The cost would probably, majority would be taken care of user fees. And again, we think we have roughly thirty, forty kids that would be interested in the program, combined schools. And also the other interesting part of it with Sacred Heart closing, they do have a team. So the idea was maybe we'd get some of those kids involved in the both the Plymouth programs, but now having some. And they would swim out of Pine Hills.
Okay. Mrs. Demash, anything? I see he, he's not on the screen anymore. Has he left?
Yeah, I don't know why. No, I'm here.
Anything else you wanna add to that?
Click the little button, you'll find him.
Left your face.
Yeah, I think the other thing.
There you go. We got you now.
I think the other thing to add is we do lose kids right now since we don't have a swim team to private schools. By bringing a private school into the high school, I think we might be able to draw some of those kids back.
And just to follow up what Scott had said, there's definitely an interest. We've reached out, we've talked to some of the kids in the building who are part of private swim clubs. And they've done a little reconnaissance mission at some of the swim clubs they're in. And they talk about the, the younger kids, those fourth, fifth, sixth graders that are swimming and the numbers there. So we think that the numbers are gonna be sustainable. It's not a one or two-year bump that we're gonna have these kids. I think we, we're gonna be able to sustain this program and continue to build it with the kids that are already in the pipeline, so to speak, at private clubs. We've had a couple of people reach out as potential coaches. So that's not a concern sometimes with, with quote-unquote private sports or things of this nature. You, you may find difficulty with coaching. We don't think that's gonna be an issue either.
All right, committee members, questions, comments, observations? Michelle?
I guess my first question is, in the estimate, you estimate the need of four lanes for four to five kids per lane. And then I hear you talking about not have, having forty students who are interested. So we start out a program without, with not enough space for the students that we have. But we see in the fourth and fifth grade level that there's a, a good percentage of students who do that. I know a lot of students who swim. So I guess my question is if we're starting a program with not enough space for the students that have interest. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we originally put this proposal out and it's, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
We didn't put it out to the students first because we didn't know if it was gonna be approved. So when this went out, we figured we'd have roughly twenty, twenty-five kids. We have as many lanes as we want, especially with Sacred Heart not practicing there anymore. So that's not the issue. Then when we put the feeler out for how many kids, once we get okay from Dr. Mayestis, that's when we find out the interest was much larger than we thought it was originally. But we do have the amount of lanes that we need to practice. That's all.
Okay, so there wasn't like Pine Hill said, only four to five lanes? Thank you.
I actually think that the Pine Hills Health Club is open and open arms to having a, a team like this practice in their facility.
Yeah, I did reach out to her prior to this meeting and I don't know if I'd hear back from her because they're not open right now. But she responded right away and she was very excited about having the, the kids in the town of Plymouth being at Pine Hills.
Okay. Thank you.
Floor is open. Other committee members, observations, questions, comments?
Let me ask you, a collaborative team, so they, they will be, it's a north-south team, just like our other startup teams have been.
Right. Let me ask about, so all of the other schools in our division, or most of them have swim teams that. So the evolution of this would be a co-op now, three years before we could get into the league?
No, we would go in right away. We would open up starting, we'd have a league schedule starting this December.
So we would be competing?
Absolutely.
This doesn't need MIAA approval?
It does by, having a co-op team is the only approval we need by them.
And, and you know better than I, they haven't been very friendly with regarding co-op teams, at least at Plymouth. Is there a different politic going on now?
They changed the rules a little bit. It, it really depends on the number of students that you have. What happened with us with lacrosse a few years ago is when one school can sustain a team by itself, they don't need the other school. That's what happened with lacrosse is that a number's got too big on one school. That's the reason why we had to divide. But swimming, we would just go to a league vote, wants to approve by the school committee, then the league vote would take it to the MIA. And I'm, I've been assured that we would be at least, at least a couple of years of the co-op. And then if the numbers determine that we have to go separate, then we'll.
Well, I guess that would be a good thing.
That would be a really good thing. Yeah, we was able to have two separate teams. That would be even, even better.
So this, any other questions? Observations? Nothing? So this is an action item. Maji, I see you.
A vote to approve it.
Maji is making a motion to approve the recommendation to establish a co-op swim team effective the school year 2021. Is that correct, 2021?
Correct.
Is there a second? Michelle, what's the second? Questions on that motion? I don't see any. Okay, Michelle.
I think my only question on the motion is I, I just think, as I, and it, maybe I should have asked it before. But in this time that we're in right now, obviously, we're gonna be hitting kind of an economic downturn. We've already kind of hit it. Obviously, it's in comparison to our overall budget. It's not a huge chunk. It's very small. Do we think that this is gonna be, I think it'd be a great thing, but received by a town meeting in a way that we're adding when, you know, at a time we maybe should not be adding?
In a sense, this sport is self-supporting. They, the, the user fees are actually covering the expenses. So the, the, the increase to the budget is negligible. It won't, it won't even, it won't impact the budget. So as far as us proposing it, if it was part of the budget, we would have proposed it in October, November opposed to now. So we won't, we won't see that. So I, I think one of the reasons why we feel comfortable in adding it is that it's not going to add a monetary increase to the budget that's been proposed already.
Okay. I was just looking at it. It looked like it, it was just a couple thousand dollars. I mean, it doesn't really matter.
So about thirty-five hundred per school after user fees?
After user fees, yeah.
Yeah, and that's with the numbers at 2025. I think we'll have more kids than that originally. The, the remaining user fees can take that up.
Okay, so the more participants will bring that down? Okay.
And as Scott said, I think the real important point of emphasis is swimming is one of those sports where it's not, we're not gonna lose basketball players or ice hockey kids or a kid who's out for track to come suddenly join the swim team. You, you can swim competitively or you can't. That's not something that somebody's gonna take up as they're interested in it. So that's a nice feature, I think, is it, it opens up avenues for kids that maybe didn't have the opportunity to participate in a school sport in the winter because the only avenue they had was clubs participation.
My only question on the motion, Bob, it comes back to you. I, I don't know if we still have it, but we had on the books a policy about going in water without some sort of certified person. And so if we have a squint swim team, I think we have to relook at that policy. That's my only point.
Wasn't that for a field, for trips outside?
No, I think the policy addressed any, anybody at water, anywhere, anytime.
Oh, okay.
It's easily, it's, Policy Committee will look at it, I think, if I'm, if I'm right.
Sir, Dr. Sorensen, you're, you're correct. We do have a policy regarding trips and students being in water and, and having CPR certified.
Water safety.
Water safety. People have to be on location. So we can look at that. I don't think it would be a conflict with the, the swim team necessarily, but we can look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I don't think it would be that we should look at it. Anything else on this motion? Okay, so are we taking a voice vote, Dr. Mayestis?
Please.
Okay, so I'm just gonna take this voice vote as it shows up on my screen. And you're, Bob, you're up first. You're voting.
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bedna? Maji?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sorensen. Thank you.
One point, Dr. Sorensen, before we close this out, but I just wanna highlight that this is Athletic Director Demash's last school committee meeting. He's retiring this year and I just wanna wish him well. And thanks to his time here in Plymouth. So this is his last meeting with us.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is the policy adoptions. Mr. Morgan?
Okay, first policy we're looking at here is the Code of Ethics 2.01. I opened them up before the meeting, so okay. We do have one minor change. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review the policy. But if you see on page two, four point O, we added in the vice chair in addition to the school committee chair in terms of procedures for addressing suspected ethics violation. And we just felt that was, should be added in the event that maybe the chair could be the problem with the ethics violation. So that's the only change to the, to the existing policy that we had.
Okay, floor is open to the committee to discuss this policy. I have a couple of items, but I would like to refer to everybody to 1.6 on page one. And there's a reference in 1.6 to something called "to play politics." That term "play politics" comes from the nineteenth century during abolition. And, and I think we could do better with this policy and not use that term. And my suggestion would be 1.6 should read "to accept the office of committee members as a means of unselfish service." And this is the part I would strike the rest of what you've written and add with the out, without the intent or plan for personal gain, whether spoken or unspoken. And that gets rid of the term "to play politics." I would make that recommendation to this, that part of this policy. My second recommendation to this policy occurs on 2.2. On 2.2, it refers to school committee members refusing to act on complaints outside the administrative chain. I don't think the policy should just address complaints outside the administrative complaint because there are times when we would be approached by somebody to take an action outside of the administrative chain that is not a complaint. It could be a request. So my suggestion on this one would be, and I'll read 2.2 as I suggested, "recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refuse to circumvent that chain of command or to act independently outside of the administration and/or school committee direction, policies, and practice." And what I'm, what I'm eliminating by rewriting that sentence is having it focused on just complaints, as it's written right now. And my third recommendation on this one is 2.5. It reads, "refer all complaints to the administrative staff." Here again, I think it should not just be complaints. It should be, "refer all complaints and educational community needs to the administrative staff." So those are my three recommendations on this policy. Mr. Morgan, I see your.
I'm just thinking out loud.
I can review them. Bedna?
I will say, so I'm part of the Policy Committee and I would recommend that instead of voting on this tonight, just to take your recommendations into.
Discussion.
Into discussion, so that we could like, for this.
Peg, do you have it? Did you get it? Otherwise, I'll have to email it to you.
If you have it written and you can send it to me, I would love it. Otherwise, I was not able to get it word to word, but I can listen to the tape.
Okay, I will do both.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll scan it up. Okay, so this is gonna go back then to the Policy Committee. And we're gonna move on to the next one. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen. The next policy we have is 2.02, School Committee Organization and Operations. And we find that one right here. Ethics, okay. And we did have several changes on the policy. If I refer you to page four of six. We have a couple of changes you'll see highlighted. 7.7, Joint Committee Meeting. The school, school committee shall meet jointly with the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of sharing information. The school committee and the Board of Selectmen shall schedule a joint meeting, which shall be no less than twice, twice a year. We had to do some research on that because we had on there once and Bo was actually twice and Chris was kind enough to do the research on that. And then a 7.10, School Committee Retreat. We added in, these retreats shall be scheduled on a Saturday, August, and February. We wanted not to, we wanted to kind of put it a placeholder, but we didn't wanna put a specific date so we could pick one depending on what's going on and whatnot. So that was the change there. And I think that was where the only changes. So I'm open to discussion.
Committee members? Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I'll move it.
With the motion to, a, a, a move policy 2.2.
2.02.
To School Committee Organization and Operations. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. We had a motion and a second. Any questions on this policy as presented? Okay, I don't see any hands. We can take this vote. All those in favor of the motion, I'll go around once again. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Back to you, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, uh, executive session, um, policy two point three. We had no changes.
Floor is open. Uh, Badger?
I move that we approve, uh, policy two point three as presented.
Okay, seconded by? Mr. Selly. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, I'll again go around. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt? And the chair votes yes. Back to you, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, we go back to electronic school board. Okay, potential litigation, uh, policies three point two. Um, we took out, um, the first paragraph, um, and, and Chris, you want to remind me why we took that one out?
So, um, as you recall, maybe from the last time that we reviewed this policy with the school committee, that first sentence was the policy. We had a discussion about whether or not it was necessarily appropriate to have a policy that would automatically put you into conversations with, um, our legal counsel for any matters that were, um, you know, potentially, um, actions against the school committee. So, um, we brought that back to the, to the, to the policy subcommittee and revised, um, this policy to reflect a more, um, I guess, um, a, a less stringent and, um, response to that, but also adding language regarding in the event that, um, legal action is taken, um, against the school department, that there would be certain terms and conditions for those individuals that may be subject to that litigation in terms of their behavior.
Ms. Haywood?
No, I'm just, um, confirming what, uh, Chris has just mentioned. It is, is, and honestly, it's actually, um, so that first paragraph or the paragraph that was, um, uh, striked was act, is the old policy altogether. So this is a brand new policy.
Okay, thank you. Uh, everybody understand it, we can take a motion. Ms. Haywood?
Um, I move that we, uh, uh, actually go ahead and, um, I don't, I don't know if I even raised my hand, but, um, I'm headed along with this, um, new policy three point two on Plymouth Schools, um, potent, potential litigation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, I know that was Mr. Selly. I didn't through it to second that one. All right. But I saw a couple of hands go up. Okay, so we got seconded by, uh, Mr. Selly. Any questions on this, on this policy, on this motion rather? Okay, again, we'll go around with the vote. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. And now we have a revision to the student handbook. Who's taking that?
Thank you. I'd be happy to take that if that's okay.
Dr. Campbell?
As you know, um, our student handbook is brought before you each year, typically in late May, June, and we'll be doing that again for the twenty twenty, twenty-one year. Um, but we needed to bring certain sections before you this evening, um, as they're, they have an impact, um, on our high school seniors. So, excuse me, so specifically in terms of final exams and class rank. So the language that, and, and I can share my screen with you maybe perhaps, or I can bring that up and show everyone. My apologies and kind of. Okay, so can, can you see the language up there now?
Yes, yes.
Excuse me, so, um, as the language in black is what is written in Appendix C for the high school level. Uh, the first section regarding final examinations, as you know, uh, final examinations make up ten percent of the overall grade for all students. Um, and there are certain exemptions for seniors, um, depending on their, um, grades within the courses, whether or not they participate in the final exams. Given the circumstances, the fact that we've been out of school since March thirteenth, um, where, um, our participation was, uh, no, was not initially, um, mandatory but voluntary in nature, um, including with the remote learning most recently in the last few weeks. Um, our recommendation is to, um, not have final exams for our seniors for the nineteen, twenty-nine, twenty-twenty school year. So that's the first part of this recommendation is to strike that from, um, from our seniors for this year. The second part has to do with class rank, and this is how class rank is typically determined. So all sections, our recommendations, um, for you, and this has been vetted by our entire administrative team, principals, coordinators and directors have, have looked at this. All twenty nineteen, twenty hints, student handbook language applies to the twenty twenty class regardless, regarding class rank. However, due to the COVID nineteen, only semester grades will be applied towards class rank for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And the reason being is with the pass fail, um, the challenge, the challenge for factoring in term three when we close, we still had, that was March thirteenth, we still had, um, four weeks left in the term. And while many of our teachers had multiple opportunities for grades for their students at that time, some of our classes had very few grades in, taken, to take into consideration. So term three performance would not be an accurate reflection of all students' performance levels and, uh, would grad, would add great inconsistency to our grading practices across our high schools. So it's our recommendation to apply the first semester to that overall, um, rank.
Okay, let's discuss it, committee. I can't, uh, Chris, you're gonna have to return the screen to-
Sorry, yep.
So I can see people. Thank you. Let me ask a question. Uh, uh, now, now it's clear to me. All of term three grades have been removed from Aspen. Is that correct?
The, the term three grades are not in Aspen. It's, it's, it's pass fail. So the students are being graded on their participation and, and that's been communicated to families and communicated to the students, correct? So in terms of the numeric weight, there's new numeric weight for that term three for seniors.
So I, I had a parent, uh, approach me and, uh, not really complain, although it sounded a little bit like a complaint that his or her daughter was doing quite well third term and, uh, they were really disappointed that those good grades, because the child didn't always get good grades. All of a sudden it's getting good grades and then a little longer on Aspen. So I tried to explain to them that we were making this change.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I fielded, uh, a few conversations and, uh, phone calls myself, Dr. Sorensen regarding that. We felt, and, you know, I have children at home that had really good grades too and, um, it, which it is, is true in many cases, but we also realized that, um, there were so many weeks left in that marking period when we closed that it's really not an accurate reflection of the total body of work that the students would have participated in for grading purposes and felt that by in, including that, which was also the recommendation of the Department of Education at the time, uh, because of the great inconsistencies in not only participation but access for students. We, we, we be mindful of how can we be, um, most equitable in these times, um, for students. And the only way to truly do that was to look at everything they had done prior to, um, you know, you know, in terms one and terms two.
Right, okay. Yeah, precisely what I tried to explain to the person. Okay. This, does this require school committee action? That, that it does, yeah?
It's handbook, so we-
Handbook.
Handbook, yeah.
Uh, so it's in addition to the handbook. It's not necessarily a change.
This would be a change to our current handbook for seniors only at this time.
Well, if it's a change to the handbook and we voted on handbook last, last year, then this is gonna require two votes like it did last week on the, on the discussion we had about the academic calendar. So I would then, if this is an addition, we don't have to have two votes. But if it's a change, then we're gonna have to have a vote to reconsider the handbook and then vote, and then the second vote would be actually to make, to accept the change. So I'll take a motion to reconsider. Michelle Badger?
I move that we, um, reconsider the handbook for, uh, school year twenty twenty, uh, nineteen twenty.
Thank you. And seconded by?
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Morgan is the second. Any questions on this vote? Uh, again, I'll go around all those in favor of, uh, in favor of reconsidering. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that motion is passed. And now we have a recommendation for the changes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes as submitted.
Thank you. Seconded by, and Ms. Badger? Any question to the changes? Okay, once again, we'll go, Ms., Kim, is you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, once again, we'll go around with the vote. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Selly?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Haywood?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So those changes have been approved. Thank you, Dr. Kim.
Thank you.
Superintendent update. Big week, big week.
Big week, we're gonna be seeing a lot of each other on Zoom. I wish it was in person. Um, it's gonna be, uh, we do begin, uh, as the three of you who are on the initial screening committee tomorrow night with an orientation at six o'clock where we'll go over, um, guidelines, expectations, things of that nature. And I also did through Ms. Grimes, um, just send out a bank of interview questions, uh, grouped into specific areas of the superintendency. So we will be going through all of those tomorrow night. Um, as with all initial screening, it's critical we stick with our process and the exact questions for all candidates. So we'll work through that with the entire committee. Um, all committee members will be involved with asking questions and things of that nature. Um, Wednesday and Thursday are the interviews themselves between, I think, three thirty and eight. I can't keep it straight. I don't know what day it is, but I know this week every day. Um, also, I did have the opportunity to speak to each candidate on the phone. I contacted them all on Thursday and Friday just to walk through the process with them. Um, I can't thank Ms. Grimes enough for her work with setting up the Zooms and all those different logistics. Uh, we did say to the candidates that, you know, generally when you come to an interview, you come maybe fifteen minutes early. They do not need to do that because we will be admitting them into the room. Uh, it's a little different, um, obviously. Um, and I, I really tried to hit home with them that when their time comes up, make sure they have their phone or email accessible in case we had a technical difficulty today at one of our meetings. Mr. Montron's cable went down. So those things happen and I think we'll have a few, few hiccups, but we've been working really hard on making sure everything's in line. Um, I do envision finalists emerging out, uh, by the end of the week. And then what we need to do as a school committee with you, I need to do with you folks is have a session, um, to talk about the next steps because what we planned on as a next steps, um, there'll obviously be next steps with the entire committee, but I think we just need to relook at what that will look like with the current situation, obviously. Um, we can't really do site visits and like, that are in the stakeholder document we put together, but we'll reframe it. And I have a few ideas, um, talking to some of my colleagues of things that we could do in a creative nature. So, um, I envision next Monday reconnecting, um, with all of you through Dr. Sorensen and getting to that next stage. And all candidates know if they're selected as a finalist, once they become a finalist, it's public information. Mr. Hubbard, I see is on the call, um, and names, and then we'll work through what the next steps for the finalists are and, um, things of that nature. So the busy week. I don't know if anyone had any questions, but again, the entire committee will be in the finalist stage of that.
Anybody have any questions about where we are? And, um, Michelle and, and Margie, I'm sure you have the meeting numbers and the passwords?
Yes.
All right, great.
If you have any questions that you folks had as any initial screening committee members would like to bring to the table tomorrow night, we'll talk about all that as well. We, you know, I put a lot out there, but we'll, we put the main, what we, I tried to focus on with the questions was the main areas of the, that our stakeholders have shared are critical areas for the next superintendent of schools, so.
Okay. Any other discussion on this agenda item? Okay, I don't see any. I'm gonna move along. All business committee members want to bring up anything from the old business pile? I do not see anybody speaking up. How about new business committee members? I don't see any new business. Report from the superintendent, Dr. Mayestis.
Yes, tonight I have a, uh, few things to report on.
You're looking really pale again, Gary.
Yeah, I moved over a Word document over to my ma- main screen here. I'll look at it from a distance. Um, the, the school calendar, I, I know we've, we've, uh, approved that. We had a call with the commissioner last week and he indicated that it's in September, September fourteenth, I believe, is when the Boston Marathon is going to be, um, run. And that day would be considered a holiday in Massachusetts. So we may, if the, and now I, I heard today that the Boston Marathon may be rescheduled past September. So there is a possibility that we're gonna have to take up, uh, reconsideration of the school calendar because of a potential move of the Boston Marathon. Um, and that the state will definitely look at having that as a day off of school and they would consider it a holiday. So we would need to reconsider the calendar once we get final guidance on what that would be. Um, so I wanted to put that on the agenda for everyone tonight, just to let you know that we may have to do that. The next item that we have, uh, for the school committee is relative to school lunch prices for next year. Uh, we were scheduled to have, uh, Patrick Van Cott come in front of the school committee next week to dis, uh, to discuss school lunch prices. We've made the, the decision at this point to keep the school lunch prices as they are, considering where we are right now with the COVID nineteen and the outcome economically of that. We, we felt that we would sit on that for a year, uh, and see how things go, but we don't think that's the time to actually change if, if we did. So we're gonna keep our school lunch prices the same for next school year. So, uh, our published prices are on our school calendar, uh, that we sent home. Uh, those numbers will stay the same moving forward. Uh, the next item I have is relative to the feeding of the, the neighbor, neighborhood that we have, neighborhoods that we have in Plymouth. We've, we've, uh, been doing pretty well with our morning, uh, breakfast and lunch program. We, we also have been doing pretty well with our Friday, um, uh, you know, backpack food going home program. We've also partnered with, uh, the Plymouth Rotary, the Noontime Rotary and, and, uh, and also the, the, uh, the Morning Rotary actually started this, um, idea. But what the noon, uh, the Morning Rotary started doing, um, this last Thursday is they donated enough money to buy a hundred and twenty-five meals, um, for, um, needy families in Plymouth or families that actually needed, uh, some, some nutrition. Uh, and these are meals that are, uh, are hot, prepared from a restaurant. Uh, and we're actually going to be doing this as of today for the next six weeks. So we have enough donors to actually cover meals for a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five meals. Could be two in a family, three in a family. We have identified families that need a level of support. Um, and we are doing that via, um, a coupon. So families will get a coupon. They go to the restaurant. There's a, an exchange, a, uh, you know, drive-by, pick up your meal and go. We're also, uh, discussing tomorrow a possibility of having delivery because we have about sixty volunteers that are helping us to get food out to families. Um, and they almost think that it's, in some cases, it might be easier just to deliver the food. So we will, uh, have available a hundred and twenty-five meals this Thursday. Uh, the restaurant, I'm not sure of the name of the restaurant yet, but we're helping in two ways. One, getting, uh, you know, meals to families and we're also helping out some of these restaurants that just have not, uh, been able to open and really function during, uh, this time. So, uh, right now we have enough donations by organizations to, uh, today that the Noontime Rotary, uh, pitched in a, a week. So, uh, we, we cost about twelve hundred and fifty dollars to be able to, uh, to be able to buy, uh, this meal for a hundred and twenty-five. So we're moving forward with that. It looks like it's, um, it's, it's gonna do, uh, another level of, of service to our community. And the last thing I have to report on today is, um, I have been having, um, phone calls with our, our staff. I do two calls, uh, one for our large, uh, certificated and, and, um, and the other one for our, uh, support staff. And we did last, last week, we did, uh, six fifty. Um, it's not requ- It's not required, but we had about 650 of our teacher staff, and then we had over about 250 of our, of our other staff on, and they've gone well, I mean, they're probably half an hour, 25 minute meetings, but it's a chance for me to share information with our educational community on what's happening in the schools, what isn't happening, and how we can handle certain situations that come up, a lot of questions have come up. And this one last thing that I want to report on to the school committee, that we did discuss with our faculty and staff, is that we're going to be opening the building, and Alex and Karen are gonna probably be interested in this, we're gonna be opening later in June, the buildings on a staggered basis, with appropriate distancing protocols in place so that students can go in and clean their lockers out and get things that they may need from school. And we'll do that, you know, with support of administration and staff, to be able to allow students to go in at all levels, and we'll do it by building, and, and they, that'll be advertised, but we'll have personal protection equipment available for students that don't come with any, or staff that don't come with any items like gloves and face masks, we'll have those available through our facility and maintenance department. So we're gonna do that later in June, we'll have a schedule out so that we can actually clear the building and get it ready for cleaning. And our deep clean will, just like our summer cleaning, will start once we get all that stuff out, and, you know, we have teachers that, you know, they want to come in, they want to come into school and clean their rooms out and get it ready for next year, you know, so we gotta get that stuff ready, and, but again, I just want to assure the school committee that we'll take all the measures necessary to be able to ensure that all those protocols of social distancing are practiced and followed through. So with that report, Dr. Sorenson, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Committee members or student reps with questions or comments regarding Dr. Mastis' superintendent's report. Ms. Hunt?
Just a, just a comment, and I know, I know I typed up the notes from my call the other day, one of the things that one of the school districts said that they were doing with food services is they were using their bus drivers and buses too, to deliver some of those meals, just saying it, I'm just saying that's what they did, they are also delivering school materials to students, but that was like more like the Amherst, you know, Long Meadow area where the internet was bad, but I know that that's just one of the comments that came up about, about delivering meals and how it was getting harder, because it's becoming more and more meals that are required, and then trying to get some of the buses being used and bus drivers employed, I just
There are some complications with that, and we have 60 volunteers right now, and our volunteer coordinator, who's a volunteer, is telling me right now, I think we have enough.
We have enough, yeah. All right, I'm just throwing it out there, it's just one of the comments that came up at my meeting.
Because we're not paying the the bus company right now, so.
Right. I think
True.
Did I see your hand up for?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for doing, I've heard really positive things from all the teachers on those weekly calls that have, I've talked to, so thank you for doing it, I know it makes them feel, not that they don't feel included, but it's a nice way to feel included and up to date on everything that's happening, I know they're, they're really thankful for them, so thank you for doing those, Gary.
Well, it's the strangest feeling that you have, when you see hundreds of faces on the screen, and you feel good that you haven't seen them in so long, you know? But it's to really, I know the, the phrase, the new normal is, is really weird to me, but this is, it's really weird, but it's, that's all we got, you know what I mean? It's all we have, so we gotta take it for what it's worth.
A few minutes ago, Dr. Mastis, when you said students can come into the building in June to take out their, their personal stuff, it felt sad, that feeling felt sad to me.
Yep.
What a way to end a school year.
It's sad to even say it, you know?
Yeah, really, it really struck me. Okay, the next agenda item is reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt?
I just, I know that I sent you guys emails, because it was a lot of notes, but this week I attended two MASC meetings. One was statewide, any school committee members, I think you guys all might have gotten the invitation, it was a meet and greet, it was, it was pretty cool, there were about, maybe about 60 or 70 school committee members from across the state on that meeting. It was good, and I typed up the notes, because it seemed like there were a lot of questions that we haven't discussed yet, and there's stuff that we have discussed yet, and a lot of really good points, so I sent those to everybody. And then on Friday, I attended a, an advocacy, federal advocacy MASC call, it was just school committee members from Massachusetts, but we talked about all of the initiatives that are going in to hopefully get some money into the schools. And today I got the notes for that, and I forwarded those to everybody, so.
Appreciate, I appreciate those notes, they were helpful to read.
Yeah, you know what, it was really, you know, I think I wasn't taking notes right in the beginning, and then I'm like, oh, this is good stuff, I better hurry up and start writing. And then the other thing too, is they're gonna start to do more of them, and I think that they decided they're gonna do a couple of different ones, they're gonna do some by region, that we will facilitate as a region three, and then they're gonna do some by subject, like one school committee member really wanted to have one just on high school graduation, where everyone shared their ideas of what they're doing special in their towns for graduation. One was on the budget, so there's like a whole bunch of different topic related ones, so that, that information should be coming soon to everybody.
Thank you. Reports and proposals from committee members.
Yeah, I just, from the building committee, I, I was on Zoom, of course, no, not Zoom, there were a call in one, for the maritime facility at the waterfront, I went to that construction meeting. So the only thing that was really talked about is the, you know, the shingles have been buckling on the, the new shingles that they'd put on, special shingles, so they've had a time getting the new shingles, but it's being redone because they're buckling up, and there's been some problems, so, but it's being rectified at this time.
Okay, Margie, thank you for that report. Anything else on the reports and proposals? Okay, so we'll move along to the accounts payable and the grants, Ms. Hunt? You're muted. Kim, you're muted.
I know, I know, I was on the screen, I had to get back, sorry. Okay, so I, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant, number S042320, dated April 23rd, 2020, in the amount of $846,953.66 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That was Ms. Burgess seconded that, on a question to that? Okay, I don't see any hands, so I will take the vote to approve the, the accounts payable warrant, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, thank you. And now we have the grants and revolving funds warrant, Ms. Hunt?
Okay. All right. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant, number G042320, dated April 23rd, 2020, in the amount of $48,135.21 as presented.
There's your motion, where's the second, Ms. Badger is the second, is there a question on that motion? I don't see any hands, again, the vote, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Haywood?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous and passed. Home, homeschooling plan, everybody's homeschooled, but go ahead.
We have one homeschool plan that is on the Jennifer School Committee consideration tonight, it has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it does meet all the guidelines set by the school committee, and I recommend approval of this document.
You've heard the recommendation, administration? Ms. Hunt?
I move that we approve the recommended homeschool plan.
Thank you, seconded by?
A second.
Mr. Selly is the second on that one, any questions on the homeschool plan? I don't see any hands, we will take the vote, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have the minutes of March the 2nd, what's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Morgan is the second, is there a question on the minutes of March the 2nd? We don't see anybody indicating a question, so we will call the vote on the motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Abstain.
That's an abstention, Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, thank you very much, that both minutes are approved. Peg, did anybody send you any questions from community input? I'm assuming that the no, I'm reading your lips.
Dr. Sorenson, I could, we had one question that was relative to presentation about grades that we presented tonight, so I think the information that was shared by Dr. Campbell was what this parent was asking for, so I think that presentation helped that question, and we'll also follow up with her relative to question that she posed tonight via email prior to the meeting.
Okay, Ms. Hunt?
I, I think that that person is one of the ones that text me that says she has no sound too, so if you did follow up with her, that would be helpful, because she's trying to watch it.
Okay. We, I actually did, I know the individual, I had a communal or two, and I did read, she was great, I reached out to her tonight and said Dr. Campbell is fine, her questions were more about grades nine through 11, not the seniors, and Dr. Campbell is meeting with a couple of the principals the next few days, and I explained that it's kind of complex for an email, so I got her phone number, and once Dr. Campbell, I'm gonna connect with him in the morning on that, and I'll reach out to her, but she was very happy with that response too.
Yeah, I recommended this morning that she send it to Peg, and she just texted me, she said, I gave up, I logged off.
Yeah, we did, Peg gave me her email, and I emailed with her right before the meeting, and she was fantastic, so I, once Chris and I will connect tomorrow and then get her some answers, it's just kind of the, this final pieces that Chris is working on with everyone, that we wanted to get the seniors done first, and since I knew who she was through my husband, I reached out to her.
Thank you.
Information coming before this committee on Monday evening on the 4th.
Okay, great response, right, great response.
Kind of thumbs up from her, so I think she's probably hearing it.
Just remind everyone that the meetings are recorded, I mean, are being broadcast live on cable, so anyone that has approached you about questions about things we're covering, they can certainly still watch us.
There's no sound tonight, I guess there's some technical difficulties, that's the problem. At first, there was no, no visual and no sound, and then there was visual only, but it sounds like now it's up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a need to go into executive session this evening to discuss a personnel matter, so I would entertain a motion.
Like a motion to move them to executive session to discuss personnel matters?
Thank you very much, is there a second, Ms. Burgess is the second, does anybody have any question on that motion?
No.
Not seeing any way, I'll take the vote to go into executive session for personnel matters, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. The school committee will be going to executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel matters, at the end of executive session, we will come back out into open session, and the only action that will happen at that time is to return the meeting.